But the part. He he represent him himself, he didn't hire an attorney, but he also knew. Just wait, be patient. Here was the corporation that visited his. Operation and they sort of just stole information just by visually seeing. So here's the rush to advance. Technology, but not understanding the sociology.
Yeah, well, when you run an organization, not understanding sociology and psychology is kind of a problem.
You're being very kind.
So I've started the recording and it looks like we've got Mike. John and Bill on the line at the moment, there may be more coming, I don't know.
How could you know?
I could have, I could have control charts and it wouldn't help much.
You didn't plant any chips in the wavelengths of these computers or do we need to disconnect to be free?
I I discovered over the years that. Probably started early, maybe about sixth grade. But as much as people are trying to push me one way or another, I have choice. The guy can put his gun to my head and said, give me all your money, but I still have choices, I just, I don't like the damn options, but. I can grab the gun, I can, I can pull Mike who's standing next to me in front of me to protect me. I can run like hell, I got lots of options, that guy can't make me do anything. It's up to me.
For sure.
Think we got Dennis coming online in a second here, at least I clicked a button that admitted him.
Oh, he has a choice.
Yeah.
You think you have a choice, only when I was committed. In the act of trying to understand. Do you speak up when if it was the state that was operating the institution? To be processed through mental inquest to be at the mercy of the organization mind. Even though you think you have choice, the reality was different.
Yes.
Figure out how do you get out from underneath even taking meds?
So. I turned on the recorder, I don't know, a minute ago. And we're focused on, but we can head anywhere we want, control charts and then the. Interesting thing I had never seen till I bumped into the new economics in the nine, early nineties. The the funnel experiment where you're tampering with a stable system. I I think it's great. Um, Don Wheeler has a great line in one of his books where he says SPC is. Is basically a way of thinking with the charts acting as a stimulation for your thought process. So it has nothing to do with statistics and nothing to do with process control. It has to do with stimulating your thinking and helping you understand. See, I think Deming's all about learning. People think he's all about data. There's a misquote attributed to him everywhere in the world as near as I can tell. In God We Trust, all others bring data and it says Deming under there. I called a whole bunch of those people to say, show me where it says that and said, oh, I don't know, I couldn't find it. I got two guys in San Francisco who in the intro to their book have that, but in the introduction itself, they said. We can't find anywhere where he said it and we were trying to find a source and it might be. We thought it might be one of the guys that was part of the Stanford. Stanford teachers over the years and they said, no, nobody could find it there. So as much as they like the quote, the attribution to Deming, they said. Doesn't seem proper.
Can't you have both?
Both what?
It learning, you know, he said he's all about learning and and also looking at data, can't you have both?
Well, you can have both, but the question that that. That I have is what are you gonna do with the data? And the and the answer I always come to is you're trying to learn. In fact, Deming offers, you don't even know what data to collect until you know what you're trying to learn.
Well, you're learning, but you're also acting and you have to make sure you're acting properly. Uh, data anal- analysis leads you into acting. Um, yes, and then you go into the PDSA and you learn from it, but then you act, that's where, you know, you have to act. Uh, otherwise, learning doesn't do you any good either.
You can be very, very wise, though.
Yes, and exactly, and what and what good is that gonna help with with your customers?
It gets nothing done.
Exactly.
There's a a doing part there that has to take place.
So that's why I think you need both, you know, the, I think the, yeah, uh, data gets overborne, overblown, but you still need it to, in order to do, you know. Make sure you're doing your analysis properly.
So are you considering data as numerical data or even? The conversation we're having as data? Or what's the form of the data? That is being sent or received?
Well, you know, I think that's, you know, you hear the di- the difference between data and facts. I think that's what we need to have a conversation about, what is the difference between data and facts?
E- even the data itself is intriguing. Cause depending how you measure the speed of light, it's different. And if you measure it eight times, you're likely to get at least six different answers. Even if you use the same majors, measurement system, so the variation enters into it, there are all kinds of intriguing things. I think what. Schuhart discovered, which is, which I think is really great. Is a, based on his empirical. Understanding and information. He said. We got mistake one or or mistake two. Mistake one is, you know, treating a special cause as if it was common cause and mistake two. Treating a common cause as this, as if it were a special cause. And he said, you can make. One of them go to a hundred percent, never miss. A special cause by every time something happens, you treat it as a special cause, you'll never miss a special cause. But you'll maximize the loss associated with with. The other side, which is, it's a, it's a common cause and you ought to be trying to work on the process. So. His empirical information was. At about three sigma. If we take action at the three sigma limit as if it's a special cause. We're gonna minimize. One mistake and if we. If we only take action when we are outside those control limits or there's a pattern in them. Then we're minimizing our economic loss. We could. People have asked me, well, can we use two sigma? Pick any sigma value you want, it's. It's, it's just that in one case, you're gonna be chasing your tail way more than if you use three sigma, but. Is two and a half sigma wrong? No, it's not right or wrong, it's just another way to look at what you've got in front of you.
But but Tim or or Dennis, if if the information. In the individual's thinking is being activated to stay up with. The process or where is? Because we're all different. And yet for sure, and here's the telephone company, you're wanting a a product of uniformity. But now that the where are the sort of roles that are being played? Then how can one's awakening? Be observed as a gift? In knowing perhaps both of these, but the the space of thinking. You may begin to see a hunch in the. The supply and demand curves is not being so smooth and there's potential issues. With either the product or you're seeing a better way to. Have a rollout of maybe even a different product or process altogether. But the manufacturer, I think this morning I was reading where some school district in Texas maybe, they. They created the diplomas for high school students because the superintendent was an acting superintendent. Then they became the superintendent. So then they had to stop and going back to reissue all the diplomas with superintendent. But here's this huge cost. And you'd think in a learning space. The the brakes could either say, hold it, we're in the middle of something, but what is really right? And proper to elevate? Or honor learning, learning to learn is even foreign. For many. I mean, to be questioning the very process by which. One's lights can come on differently, you may become an outlier, but you're still. Uh, a value as a citizen or potential. Employee or employer.
I would offer that for most products and services. You would like stability. And and. Managing the variation to get you the stability that allows things to proceed. But in manage your people, managing your people, I think you'd like like a lot of diversity. So it's like a wider spread, if you will, in variation of thought.
Are you referring to the prevailing lack of, are are the upheaval in in the language of diversity when it could be just lip service? Or do you want culture? I mean, there's just different ways people could be. Warning themselves to the job at hand and it could take a while to fit into the mold of what a.
Yeah, we have, we have seventy billion people or seven billion people on the planet. So there are seven billion realities and there's a lot of overlap in a lot of places, so we share a lot of things. But every one of those people is unique. And with telephones, Bell didn't want every telephone to be unique. But I'm sure they wanted a whole bunch of people, especially those working at Bell Labs. To have a lot of variation in their thoughts so they could go off and try new and different things.
Creativity is essential for finding out new ways to do things.
Yes. Hard to create something you haven't thought of.
Is that not ongoing?
Sure. You, you may not have thought of it today, but you might think of it tomorrow.
You might also just observe something that is unusual, you haven't seen before and think of it a different way.
Yes. And that can come from somebody asking you a question.
Mm hmm.
I've, I found with these sessions, when people ask questions that I have never thought of asking. It causes a. It causes a lot of thought and saying, well, what would be an answer to that and what does that mean and how does that apply everywhere else?
And where does it not apply?
Yes. That's, that's something that. We're supposed to be able to do with theory is recognize when our theory doesn't apply to this situation. And either come up with a new theory. Or or say, well, we're happy with our theory and we're gonna keep doing what we're doing, we don't care what's going on over there.
Or or you might care, but. I- i- is the conversation totally within a, across a technology or is your unconscious? Um, maybe. Bringing in the past or potentially even going into a future moment, but regardless somehow. Understanding what. Reality is or isn't. I've, I guess for me, there is a. When I'd be in art school initially, they're talking about the visual language. And you begin to awaken to the idea you're, the vi- you're making your inner self. The unconscious come out, but the brushes. Have more intelligence than I would have. I mean, there there are ways you can go study different artists and see what they were trying to communicate. You can look at. Doctor Eric Candle and he would write about how the eyes seems. But there's so much. Information understanding that to really go into. The depths of theory and know a language that is unique to that particular profession. One can. I mean, to, I think to to back out a little bit and look for the whole, I mean, look for the underlying pattern. Or patterns by which. This evening is even working. Six screens from people being maybe in six different locations. That's pared away a lot of. What that, what a human being could be about. In a, in a sad way, I mean, but it's a way you made it so effective way.
For beginners. I usually ask the question. Why does Deming say you can't improve a process? Until. You can't begin to improve it effectively. Until it's a stable.
Well, a process uh, isn't really a process unless it produces something continually. Uh, that you, we will have multiple processes going on. If you have an unstable situation.
Yeah, and so when you make a change that you think is an improvement and get a different result, whether it's better or worse. You don't know if it has anything to do with the change you made.
That's right. I also think it's, you know, it has to do with. You know, once it's stable, management knows where to focus its attention. It focuses on, you know. Those, those events that um, are within its control as opposed to special events. So I think that's a very important part, you know, so management knows where to focus as opposed to thinking they know where to focus.
I've had a few conversations with people too and and just curious what you all think about. Like how stable is stable? Cause if you can have a a process that looks very stable on the control chart and, but then. You know, there's, there's a couple of special, there'll be a special cause here or a couple of special causes there. And like, how fast does it become unstable? Yeah, unstable.
The definition of stability is based on uh, no points and no special signals outside the control limit, so that point that went out of control. And during the period of time that that event occurred, this process was not stable. And and Rob, remember if this is backward looking. So it's not future looking, and I think that's what people get hung up about, say, oh. This is how it was, do I know how it's gonna be in the future? No, things can change, but looking at the data, looking backward. You, you know, you're, you're able to say, okay, we think it's stable, given the current quote unquote, current conditions. Um, and conditions can change overnight, uh, as we see with our politics and in economics the way they are. And it all depends on what you're trying to achieve with the process, sometimes you want stability. That's the best you can do is just keep it as stable as possible. Sometimes you're trying to produce more. And you're producing at the limit you can do and you've got a stable process, but you might have an out of control in the good direction if you're trying to do bigger is better. Now that's a really wonderful thing that that happened because something occurred. It gives you more of the good stuff that you were trying to achieve. So you have to, you know, be aware of that as well.
Thanks.
So yeah, the. The idea that when you get ready to make an improvement, first of all, I have to decide. What it's gonna cost you and what the return is, cause might not be worth the effort. And then you have to decide whether you're trying to narrow the range of variation or move it to another level. And why, then you have to have the the whole idea of having a theory and then saying, let's. Plan, do, study, act and see if we can make this process better. Better by our definition, which is move to another average or. Reduce the amount of variation in it or for heaven's sakes, increase the amount of variation in it and keep it a, and still keep it stable.
So if if you're saying the first thing you do would be to. Look at the cost? How do you know what the costs are?
You have to, you have to estimate them. Say, here, here's what I think it's gonna cost a. If I keep going where I'm going, I know what the costs are, if I make this change and the improvement. Puts the average value on a, on a different target. I, I have a theory that it's gonna improve the output. And my, and my cost position. And then I start a plan, do, study, act cycle and try to see what I get for results.
But but is that held within accounting departments or in terms of just putting numbers to a situation? If if an accountant knows where tax deductions are, what might be given. A degree of of backing. Th- there's so many variables that can make either the. The currency itself stronger or weaker, but the currency within a business or the research, the actual. Risks. Qualitatively or quantitatively that are. That that I would think this is where I'm ignorant of to understand that process. Uh, if this is the first thing, then had you. Give green signals to people to experiment or explore. In space within a organization or within a community. If the attitudes. Can be sending away the Galileos or the DaVinci's or. Whomever.
Peaker Services manages to give people a lot of space. To, to, to decide what might be done. I don't remember the figure now, it used, I remember a thousand dollars, but it might be more. Of company money if they've got an idea that they think is gonna benefit the company. And they need some tools or something to help them conduct the plan, do, study, act cycle. It's okay for them to go out and spend that money, they'll get reimbursed.
Yeah, or even in, in my case, it's a little more opportunity cost. Because we only have a few of us engineers and and we have a large pile of. Uh, things that we could work on and we're trying to balance it against. Uh, there is no sort of hard number, it's not like we're gonna lose X customers if the system is down for ten minutes. But we're trying to minimize, you know. How long the system is down and there's how much effort is one going to put into that? And it is, you know, and have it be worth it, because if we can make it so that outages are, say, a minute or less. Uh, they're, they're. Very likely is not much um. Reason to spend more to try and make it perfect, cause it's never actually gonna be perfect.
Help me understand the the opportunity there, so there's random causes which caused the system go down and you're working on. Activities that will reduce that. Those e- events, is that, is that the improvement opportunity?
Yeah, and actually these, these two, both of these chapters really apply very much, at least in my head. Because it's very easy to 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 go tampering with this. Because it's, uh, you know, we have some outage and and so we think it's because we have some. Uh, some timeout, um, and so the inclination of some of the engineers is just, just change the values. But we don't actually know, like, we don't have the measurement of how often are we down and are we actually making it better or worse? So, but the the opportunities are that, I mean, there are feature projects I could be working on. There are, um, there are other. Uh, we have multiple systems that we're all responsible for and this particular system. Uh, I mean, I can be, I could be digging at this for. For weeks, um, just sort of trying to im- improve maybe another minute of of uptime.
Yeah, I I wanna get back to, I think Bill has a a good question there. What kind of costs should be involved? Uh, I don't think, I personally don't think that the accounting department should be. But, you know, Rob, let's look at your situation. Um, what kind of costs? And then when, you know, do you get to a certain point, oh geez, it's gonna cost the company. Ten thousand dollars, it'll cost us a lose, you know, a lost customers, it'll cost us. Uh, someone leaving in their department, whatever, what, what kind of costs, I think Bill has a really good uh, question there.
Yeah, I mean. I I think that. It it's, it's just, it's very, um. I don't know, it's, it's non-obvious to me actually what. How we do, how you would measure these costs? Cause there is no, I don't think there is any, I mean, there could be accounting apartment, department to be involved. If we were to actually actively lose customers. But we, we don't. We don't really see that and it would be very disconnected from it, right? It would be, because your quality of service has gone down.
Let's play the game that, you know, uh, it's down for ten minutes. What's the difference between that if it's down for a half an hour, an hour, half a day, a day, so forth? Sooner or later, you're gonna say, oh, we gotta do something instead of, you know, da 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 da, we're not gonna lose it. So there is something that there is a a threshold that you're using. Uh, and if it's my cost, what are you using to make that decision?
Yeah, and it, it, I mean, and it's definitely not just me, but it's, um. It, through, that's a good description of how to put it, cause as the outage time goes up. There's probably no finite line, but there are zones where all of a sudden support calls will start to go up. I have actually seen that in other cases in the past, like the support line heats up and you can measure that. Um, and. And usually, I guess in my experience, it takes, it takes longer, um, it takes. But sort of frequency of of support requests and I suppose if you weren't to deal with that. Uh, that, that then you'll start to see client drop offs. But again, there's a whole lot of other factors, right? There's the, the other forces of the market and. Uh, how many competitors you have and do they have another option, your, how locked in are your customers, that sort of thing.
So Rob, I I I apologize, I I don't wanna call your company out, but it's sounding to me. Like you don't have a process. For this. That one, one day it could be, oh geez, half an hour, maybe we gotta do something and a week later it might be four hours. You know, depending on all the different, so it's, that's what, my apologies, but it's sounding like. There is no set process and it it varies the pace, you know, on, on every day, what happens?
I I would a hundred percent agree, it's definitely no formal process and, uh, yeah. And, you know, and and a lot of it is finger in the air, doing it by feel.
Okay. Just for my context, are you like keeping ERP systems running, is that kind of the stuff you're doing or is it design software or what is it?
Uh, it's, it's actually, it's a portable housing application software, so. Some, somebody is applying for affordable housing, but but we actually are paid by the property owners. That are trying to fill their, their housing units of. You know, that have, uh, they they get, I I think typically, right, they get tax incentives. By having affordable units or, yeah, that are part of some program. Either state or um, or federal program.
Interesting. So by comparison, say locally. Two things. Years ago, when I worked in the ba- in a bank. Um, a dear friend had worked in it before, but the banker, you know, the history. Whether they're state chartered or national, you get into how they're run. Whether they're state chartered or national, you get into how they're run, how often they can be audited. The banker, I don't ever remember us having a. Accounting department. The banker knew what numbers he was wanting to see, it's who they knew. Correspondent banks, but I would walk downtown. With. The postage bag, I mean, a bag that you mail through the US Post back to our correspondent bank with a sizable amount. Just because. Excess cash he didn't want. Didn't, and the previous man who'd worked for the bank, he went in to say, so and so, I, I can't feed my family. On what you're paying me. So here's the nature of. Monetization or currency being made through loans or federal government. But what is the quality or qualities of the local conversation? When now this town, I mean, where they. So educationally, they might have three colleges in this town, but the, the clearings that can occur so quickly. In the, then we'd send the, the checks to Little Rock to be processed by. Uh, Warren Stevens or Stevens, Systematics, but you get into the, the mechanics. Of currency, here's data, but even back then, in the beginning of sending the workout. Sometimes the, the, uh, work done by Little Rock, the computer would be kicking in extra numbers or not. So you're trying to figure out where do you stand in the course of a day? When around the world, all banks were clearing at two o'clock, I think was a general trend, but now. If you're even realizing a different type of currency, monetary, not. What is the qual- well, how do you realize the qualities? Of the research or the ability for a human to stay with. The charge of their job or that role that's trying to be played when. Things can go south on you fairly quickly if there could be another. Business knocking at the door. Outside of state or maybe in the community, but you're wanting to foster a thought innovation in continuous improvement.
One of the key things in improvement. When Demi talks about. Improving things, even one of his fourteen points is often misread. What he's, what he's poking at us to do. Is improve the system of production and services. Not improve the individual departments and individual parts and individual beings. It's improve the system. That produces your results. I remember I worked as a, as a. Facilitator to the executives at Rockadine for a number of years. And every time they got a, a result they didn't like. The, the first response was the system's broken. And I told him. Maybe, but it's much more likely. That it's functioning the way it's always functioned, this is one of the results you can get. Just cuz you don't like it, doesn't, doesn't mean anything's broken. I, I also told them that I thought. They were looking for Formula One performance, but they were driving. A Mercury Villager. Mini van, I said. The, the van's not broken, it's a perfectly functioning van, it's not broken. If you don't like the result you're getting, we need to change the system, change the car.
Well, so let, let, let me, let me ask you this, so Toyota's big thing, as everyone know, is developing people. That's how they improve their system. Developing the people, the people then develop and fix the system. So it's not going out to get another car. Per se, it's. People, what can you do to fix the system? It might be a new car, it might be a new way of transportation, so forth and so on, so. Given that. Deming, what he's saying. How do we fit fixing the system and developing the people to work together? I think that it's in, it would be nice to think of people as belonging to the system. So it's an integration of people and the system that we're working on. So you're saying people are things, that's what I'm hearing you say, belonging to a system. They are things. I'm, I'm, uh, I'm trying to say that the way that people interact with each other form a system. I think they form a community.
They could.
And I, I, the system might be a type of community, but I would say people form a community. And they create the culture. Again, how does that different? And I think it's different from a system, my personal view. I might be using the word system too, uh, too grandly. I, 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 I think I like the distinction of a community. And it's a community of people and the way that culture works can be improved. If you've, if you've got, um. Lack of co- cooperation, lack of, if there's one-upmanship, that sort of thing, if that's your culture. You can set about to improve the culture. Okay, again, you know, it said, community, culture, now talk to me about systems. For me, the systems are comprehensive of. The way people are organized, the way the shop is organized, the way the. The supply chain is, um, organized and the way we interact with that supply chain. The, the policies that are in place that govern what's permitted and what's not permitted. You know, following the rules of law, that's all part of the system. John, what do you? Put it all together. Okay, John, what do you think?
I, I think that, well, first of all, I think that a, a community can be a type of system, but. I think if you're talking about the system, Bill always talks about where, where you can draw the line on the system. So if someone talks about a system, it's like, okay, where, where's the line on the system? Is it? The corporation, is it the city the corporation's in, like where? Yeah, would be my first question is where, where are we drawing the line on the community? And then. From there, I'd see what are the parts of it and a part of it can be. The people and the community and, and all of that, but. Where are we drawing this, this system at?
Yeah, and, and no matter where we draw the line. Everything, everything we think is a system is actually a subsystem. And so the purpose of the subsystem you're looking at. Is found in looking outside of that subsystem and seeing how it fits in. The overarching system of which it's a part. And if you want to improve. Your impact on the world around you, you wanna be doing things that are gonna make what you do. Help make the larger system of what, what you're a part better. And Rush used to tell us all the time that the purpose of a, an organization, any organization, is development, as you said. It's to develop people, develops other things too, products and services and markets, but. It's development, the purpose is development. And so development should be. An inherent activity. And it would be better if it were conscious rather than subconscious. Where you're actually trying to get people to end up being able to interact better with each other. You're muted.
Uh, I agree with you, so if developing the people is important, so let's go back to your analogy. Where you have Rockadine and you have these C-suite people that see a problem. Do you change the system or do you tell them or how do you bring in developing people into that conversation? Of C-suite people because. Unless they change their mind. Or change their thinking, I should say, you're, you're gonna get, the next time that you're not there, they're gonna go back to, okay, we gotta do blank. Instead of, so how do you, how do you, when you were there with Rocket Dine, how did you bring in developing people? Into the conversation or was that just a, a non-starter?
Well. I, I did the best I could over and over again. The biggest gain I made is the VP of Quality. Finally figured out that handing out awards and recognitions and big celebrations. Where you invite six hundred of three thousand people is a bad thing. So, that's some progress.
You think going to Hawaii with six hundred people is a bad thing? Come on, I wanna go to Hawaii.
He came in, he came in and I almost, I almost fell on the floor. He came in. One day after just that kind of a thing, right there on campus, there was a. Big barbecue and all kinds of people so- getting awards and people were under these big tents and. Seemed to be having a great time and he came in after lunch and. VP of Quality's got a staff sitting around him and he, he starts asking him, what did you think about what was going on outside? And, and he go, he al- always went around the table and po- po- pointed at people and said stuff. And, and one of them said, well, you know, uh, you know, I was this guy's manager, he's getting an award, I didn't even know he was getting an award. And then that's when, that's when the VP says, well, yeah, we could invite all the managers and then we don't wanna be excluding. Fifteen hundred people.
Well, and, and then another manager says, well, none of my people were invited. Oh, what does that say about me, you know?
Yeah, it's, 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 it's hard, but. I'm, was surprised. His light bulb went on, I remembered another staff meeting, he got mad at me, whatever I was saying and then. As we left the meeting a little later, he was apologizing for getting angry and I said. No, you don't need to apologize. If I don't piss you off every once in a while, I'm not doing my job, you're never gonna change.
That pissed him off too.
No, when you, when you hear that and change. And people say you'll never change. And then live, I moved into a retirement village and a man who's eighty-five, he may be saying, uh. Well, I'm not gonna change, but he worked in business, in fact, he was working for some of those. Companies that were, couldn't keep up with Japan, but he had to go close the factories that maybe manufactured the TVs. You sort of get the pictures as you often describe in the past. In some of these conversations, but the, the reality, to me at least, is of aging. And I told him when I moved out here that I wanted to live, not die. Yet you start reading about retirement villages or places where. People may not be able to stay as active, but is there activity? Shaped by management that begins to shut one down? Or do people like Rabbi Schneerson of Abbott in Brooklyn? I mean, he was active up to the last, he was working even into the night. But, uh, the commitment to learning and teaching. And trying to. Help. People change and realize their vocation. Is an incredible. Challenge, I guess, to try and absorb and transmit to a community. It's not just monetization, it's the pursuit. To ask a question and perhaps even answer with questions, but then. It's not like you just walk in one day and say, I've arrived, that there's so much. Ongoing learning, it's endless. Yet, in, in the upheaval that's going on now, a lot of. Places may be finding out the next day your job is gone. And it's, it's happening. I think perhaps more dramatic right now, which may open up doors and, in hindsight. But there's a collapse of where was the information held, where were people going to base their decisions on? If you won't be having that degree of precision, it's as if. Even in sports, there's a degree of, of hitting, but if you go to an orchestra. I think the different sections sort of work together to give the whole sound. And there's a certain. Uh, dynamic out on the playing field in sports. Are the people is, is tuned? To a, uh, a way of knowing equally? Or is the change? Being chopped up? And then expecting people to show up when there's so many players. Contributing to how our world is being tuned or unraveled.
You know, you know, Bill, I have a question for the group here, so you brought up something, change, um. And I went to school at, one of my graduate degrees was in University of Toronto and just this past week. The Hudson Bay Company. Said it's gonna go bankrupt. Reason I bring that up, there is a phenomenal book that was done by Ari DeGais called The Living Company. And what he did, he's, he looked at companies that had history around the world of being two hundred years. Or older, that, that had been in operation for two hundred years or more. What is the special thing about them? Um, and what? What, the reason I bring this up is that, um. Hudson Bay had been around since the sixteen hundreds, you know, they were the primary part of England, you know. Fur trading in Canada, so forth and so on. They've changed, they've adjusted. For four hundred years. However, what's happening in the last twenty years with the, the, the. Ex, ex, uh, the increasing speed of change in technology. That they've been able to, to morph change, da-da-da-da, it's just going so fast. After four hundred years, they have to declare bankruptcy, so. Given that, what Deming is saying, given what, you know, what Ari DeGais. Found for these companies, perhaps some of these things aren't gonna be. A re- relevant, given the speed of change, giving, you know, maybe it's all of Deming points aren't gonna be of, you know. His theory might not work in the speed of change that's happening, I don't know. All I'm saying is, after four years. This company's going bankrupt. Um, and, you know, it's. Those are the kind of change questions that, you know, we should be from the outside looking at Deming's. Is Deming's work still gonna be relevant, given what's happening in, in the world? Um, I, that's what we as practitioners should be looking at.
I see Deming's work as being. Very directed at developing people and developing relationships. And I don't think that's gonna go away, no matter how fast. Things change.
Well, but, but if technology changes. And we don't need development of people like we did in the past to think of everything. To have managers to make their analysis and make their decisions, so forth and so on, so, so. Uh, i- is, are we at a point where? Some of these fundamental things are changing? I don't know, it's, I'm bringing that up to the, oh, this just spurred my thinking, a four hundred year old company, Ari DeGais has. There's ten, twelve companies in the world that have been around for two hundred plus years, he had four principals, now. Speed of change might be changing things.
I, I guess the thing that popped into my head when you said that Dennis was, uh, the, the thing that you brought up a few minutes ago of. Of like, you know, on the control chart or looking at. Uh, a stable process, which, uh, I guess maybe in some respects, we could consider that was a stable process, that this is. It isn't forward-looking and, and it's really no guarantee of the future. Um, and I, I think, I like, just from a quick search, it looks like, uh, right, like COVID really hurt. Hudson Bay Company, big time, I guess, so.
As, as a kid with a, you know, and I, I, I use, you know, since nineteen ninety, only a hundred fifty Fortune five hundred companies are still here. Because of whatever reason, but. Things are changing up very quickly and so. Oh yeah, we, we take Deming's work and we take it, it's, it's as gospel. Um, well, is it gospel or is it very good and does it apply to today's? That's what I'm asking. And I, I don't know the answer, obviously, but it just, this spurred my thought and I thought this be a good, when, uh, when Bill brought this up. I, I, I went back and, and looked back at Ari's, you know, work. Phenomenal work, if you haven't seen it, it's phenomenal work, but. You know, change is, is accelerating so quickly.
I think the thing is, is that this is kind of what Bill and I have been talking about this. Looking at Deming from one dimension, two dimension or three dimensions, and I think. This, you know, looking at the Red Beat Experiment and looking. This, you know, looking at the Red Beat Experiment and looking at control charts and just looking at it as data. And one dimensional, yeah, there's no way it's gonna, it's gonna keep up, but. A lot of what Deming said and even Akoff said. The purpose of management of the very upper management is to be looking down the road and anticipate. While everybody do anything else. So I think if you look at what Deming wrote in a three dimensional fashion. The if the top people should be like creative and anticipating and and having all these alternative. The problem is, is once you start making a bunch of money. And this is, this is the whole, like, like, uh, you know, what what um. What Tim sent out last week about uh, Alfie Cohen and all these. It's like the minute, and somebody told the story a couple of weeks ago that I'd been sharing with everybody about the guy who who gave a dollar to people screaming at him.
Yeah, it was me.
That was great. So I've been telling that like three or four times every week. Everybody loves it, cuz it's a great example. These kids were happy. Then they got happy making money for what made them happy and then.
Extrinsic motivation and then when that was withdrawn, all of, all the motivation was gone.
Right, and it's so easy how our brains just, we give up the thing that makes us happy for. Making money doing it and then it becomes the money and then. It, we're no longer happy. And so I think that's the thing is some of these businesses get so day to day. And you get so focused on making money that the guy at the top is not looking down the road and they become a two dimensional or a one dimensional company.
So let's, let's, let me challenge you on that. Um, it has always been said that. The C suite is looking forward, but they're not in touch with the frontline. Um, and they don't know, when was the last time you saw the CEO on the shop floor? Does the CEO even know what John Doe does on the shop floor? So. Let me challenge that. So they do look at the frontline for, again, how does Deming help them do their job differently? Not better, differently.
I I I don't think they are looking down the line. It's Akoff said. You know, when you, when you look at the decisions that these people make. And correlate it for, you know, what's best down the road, what's best for the shareholders, all the stuff. There's a very little correlation. When you look at decisions that benefit them personally and keep themselves. You know, secure, that's the decisions they make. So I think really from the top level, they aren't. Looking down the road and they aren't, they can't be challenged. That's why, like you said at the start, you had, you were asking. Tim of this question about like, what did you do at Rock and Dine when the top people didn't listen to you? It's like, well, Rocket Dine was a company with awesome C suite people who were always looking down the road and were always creative. And we're always open to being completely challenged in what they could be doing wrong, right? The C suite should look like that.
So as an aside or or part of this that you brought up Toronto, by coincidence. Y'all will like this, I think, I would go from, went out to Oklahoma, the. To start city planning, the engineering dean of the city planning program said, you don't wanna study the social thermodynamics. So I pulled out of the program, I went to work in Tulsa. Was told I was hired and three days later I'm fired. The man who hired me hadn't gotten the approval. Of the position through city council. So for this next year, I I recalibrated myself and applied to UCLA, Denver. In this little school that started in Waterloo, Ontario in nineteen fifty-seven, called the University of Waterloo. Within the program, there was a man by the name of Bob Dorni from Michigan who was a vet. And he was interested in ecology and the whole faculty was environmental studies. And there was a man that his interest was in policy. Lynn Gertler's son is now president of the University of Toronto and was head. A few years ago across the the presidents of Canada, but when I've tried to spend time writing a letter to them. What's interesting is to think ecology is a verb. Not the environment outside the door or nature's down the road in the park. It is this incredible thinking that this school started in fifty-seven and. Accelerated and now they'll be building electric airplanes and the engineering students are trying to figure out, what do you do with the waste? But the, go back and visit these places and understand what's happening in Toronto. Have you move a thinking crowd around when in Canada they use. Labor, I mean, outside immigration as a way to to augment economic development. But to change and realize that degree of change that is occurring. Either whether it's through formality of academia or. In some countries, Canada now even, you have the license to even witness assisted suicide. There is this change going on that to me is. Uh, now, how do you go ask the questions diplomatically? Bill Fulbright, when I was working on my masters, he said to me, I went down to see him. Over the Christmas holidays, went out to Boston too. But he said to me finally, he says, what does planning have to do with politics? I sort of choked. Cuz I've seen it, when I worked in Congress this summer of seventy-two, here was a man talking about. Uh, working for Fulbright, he went to see Johnson and he was talking about how Fulbright would wear his hush puppies, but. These little stories to me are fascinating, which tell a story about a human being. And humans trying to understand where are the pressure points for a budget? For accounting, for movement of funds, for creation of wealth. Or you just go destroy other countries just because somebody thinks they are the. They can just do away with what was configured in policies over years, Hudson Bay included. Because just to eat up and destroy, it's it's mind boggling. Who do you need, who do we need to have a? A conversation with? The chosen six this evening or five, or whomever else might be listed. Because I think that to go ask the question, even in my dream tonight, I may end up having a different. I will have a different reality going forward after visiting with y'all. I may need to be out on the tennis court with Rob.
Yeah, but Rob, Rob, that's, you know, tennis courts are so per se, it's it's pickleball now, Rob, come on, you gotta get, keep up with the changes, Rob, come on.
Non sequitur, but uh, but actually, we talk about this all the time because these particular grass courts are so soft. That it's actually very much like pickleball right up near the net. Is, yeah, there's nothing you can do, the ball will bounce there at all, so it's pretty funny. But yeah, I'm still very resistant to that whole, that whole thing.
Change is coming, Rob, change is coming.
Right, but I'm already bad enough at this one.
Pickleball paddles cost only five bucks at Dollar Tree for a paddle and a ball. The next place is twenty-five or thirty bucks, thirty bucks for two balls.
A- ask me again when they make it silent. It's like a bad game of Gennifkin up.
We're coming back to what Dennis was asking, what what, why is the top management not uh, not on this? Way that we think it should be. I I think that's the summary, Dennis. Uh, it seems that um, Deming is very generous in his view of human nature. And all people want is joy and work and to contribute and to do a good job and feel good about doing a good job. And I think that's true for a a great deal of people. But unfortunately, I think there's a correlation. Uh, in the people that rise to the top of big corporations in America today. And not having those criteria, not having those uh, views. It's more me, 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 it's not win-win. It's win-lose and they wanna win at others' expense. So I think that's a fundamental. Glitch in the assumption we might bring to the table that. This is a common feeling that win-win is the right way to go. And I think it was radical when Deming was presenting it in the sixty, seventies, eighties and early nineties. And it's still radical and that's where I think the problem is.
So, so let me.
Radical everywhere, though?
No, it's Western.
I, you know, I just came back from a couple of years in in the Middle East and also in in Asia and uh. It's still prevalent, I mean, it's um, it's our, it's the economic system. Um, and the re- reason I say that people might be thinking win-win or thinking of people, but when they, what happens? When they making up to this, the C suite. Um, and so I think it's just the economic system that we're in and how can Deming? Help us get those people to keep their values? I don't think that, you know, the people didn't have those values before the C suite. I think they had them. Something happened as they were climbing the ladder. And so how do you make this transition? From a win-lose to a win-win? It's hard to go directly from one to the other. How do you make that transition?
I I I like your thinking and agree with your proposal, as that's what we should be focused on. But I would disagree with one point. I don't think that they all started with that position and I think unfortunately there's a correlation.
Yeah.
That the most narcissistic folks in the group are uncharacteristically more likely to be the top. The top folks at the top places.
Well, I, okay, uh, that can be debated, um, but the whole point is. Going back to, how can Deming's work help? Those managers making the the decline to keep their values? To keep the focus on developing people, uh, so forth and so on. Um, and. You know, you know, we we always say, oh yeah, and and, you know, oh yeah, Deming came up with these views and they must be sacrosanct. Well, yeah, they they're good. But how do we get from A to his views? And I think that's what we have to think of. How do we get there as opposed to? Well, obviously everyone should be win-win. Isn't that obvious? Well, you know, for two hundred years, it hasn't been obvious. So how do we get from there to there?
Yeah, that's, that's the challenge right there.
Yeah, and then so how does Deming, how do we get Deming's views to do that? I don't know. And that's why I don't think that not everyone in the C suite, I've, I've been in the C suite, so. Um, but not everyone in the C suite, I don't think everyone has those views. However, what do people lose or give up or have to? Change in order to, you know, to play the game up there.
So I, this is again, what what Bill and I have been talking a lot about and this sounds crazy, but I've seen this happen. And um, and I I do this when I go in a classroom. You know, I think I talked about this before and it's like. You know, what, if you could, if you had a magic wand, what would you have? And these kids will say, I wanna be famous or I wanna have money. Why do you wanna be famous? So I have money. Then I say, well, why do you want to have money? So I can buy this. Why? So I could do this. Why? So I can be happy. Why not just be happy? And the kids just. Like stare, you know, and and silent and I don't know, I'm a Kurt Vonnegut fan. And I think the best short story ever written was called The Foster Portfolio. Don't know if any of you have heard of it, but it is, it is a great. Great short story to go through with, I mean, I think it'd be a great short story with executives. But it is a mind-blowing short story to go through kids cuz the gist of the story is is, is it's written from this guy who's a, who's a investment guy. And he's got, walks into this family that's living in squalor and they give him a packet of some. You know, securities that they inherited and he's thinking, oh, it's like ten thousand dollars. And he finds out it's like a million dollars or whatever and he's like, I don't get this. And the husband is like, I'll handle this and he can't understand. Why the husband's not using this money to fix the family, he's not understanding any of this stuff and the kids all just go. What's wrong with this guy? And you learn a lot about the family and everything. And then he meets the guy at the end of the story in this greasy spoon rundown restaurant. And he can't see where he is and all of a sudden they announce this blues, you know, get piano player is gonna play under this assumed name and it's the guy. And the gist is, is that if he had that money, he wouldn't be happy. And it's like, no, like you get these kids, like they wanna argue that point. No, if he had the money, he could still be happy. No, he would. Because it was set up, his family wouldn't let him go work in this dive. And they don't know he's playing this and if they knew it, cuz his dad was a musician, they would be stopping this. He's actually doing what makes them happy. And money would literally prevent him from doing that. And that's.
Okay.
So the whole thing is, is that we don't, we are not teaching people how to be happy. I did a whole series. On LinkedIn called The Decline and Fall of the Machine Age. It's based off of a a presentation. Bill shared with me from Akoff. And when you go through it, it's like there is a way to unravel this. And I don't know if you've ever seen Mind Walk. It's one of Bill's favorite movies, but I literally worked that into it because they have the solution in that movie and they don't know it. And so that at the end of my thing, I showed, but the whole, this whole thing comes down to. Everybody who's chasing money is making everything wrong. Every, you could take everything back to. Money is causing everything wrong, but why is money causing everything wrong? But you don't deal with the money. The reason is everybody thinks having money will make them happy. So the way to dissolve the problem is to teach people how to be happy and that's what I do. Is I show people how to be happy and then they're able to have these generative. Organizations, I would tell you, that's here in this book, in the new economics, is what Bill and I talk about. Like he has the dissolve on all of this. If you look at this book three dimensionally. But if people are gonna talk about it for one dimensionally, yeah, you'll never see it. But there is a way to use this book to do that and I was doing that, didn't know it. And I didn't think Deming understood it cuz I thought Deming was one dimensional. And then Bill had me read this book and we talked about it and I realized everything I had done to fix organizations. Is technically in this book if you read it three dimensionally.
So I I ask similar question to my students. Why do you want to be in upper management? And they say to make decisions. So how can being happy?
Why do you wanna make decisions? My next question, why do you wanna make?
I understand, you could go through all that, but being.
It's all gonna end with happy.
Uh, well, being happy will not necessarily make a good system.
Okay.
It 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 can, it can, but it might not. So how do we use Demings? To help make a better system and being happy doesn't necessarily make a good system. Hudson Bay was a happy company, the system wasn't blah, 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 blah.
I would go, I would do the definition of happy because I don't think that these, I think these people are content. I don't think they were happy.
Well, okay, your definition of happy is mine from Tim's and Rob's and Mike's and Bill's so forth and so on. Uh, and so to say that you're happy or that Deming was happy and to say that they weren't. Well, Deming was right and they were wrong. So if they're all looking at happy. And they're looking at differently, again, so that, so that's why I'm saying, I'm not sure happy necessarily equates to being. An effective management system.
Well, there's four ways for people to be happy. Your brain habituates the four thought processes. So when I get up in front of people, I say. Take out a sheet of paper and write down what you think you have to have or do to be happy. And then I say, you can tear it up and throw it away cuz I can tell you there's only one of four answers. And it, and it totally dictates how your brain is is wired for happiness. Now, the thing is, is I say. Make sure whatever you write down is you're actually consistent with, cuz if you write down, I'm gonna be content with, you know. With my family, but you're actually chasing money, your unconscious brain, which is ninety percent of your brain, will sink you and you'll end up depressed. So I've helped over a hundred people get off antidepressants cuz I understand how the brain causes people to be depressed. So the four answers, your only four answers you're ever gonna get is number one. I need my competition or my enemy to die or suffer. So that's that dysregulation. We talked about that last week or the week before. So when, if people write down, I need, you know, people to, I need my competition to go out of business or I need this guy to fall down a manhole and die. Your brain is wired and it's technically the definition of a narcissist. And I I help people actually deal with narcissists because it's narcissists get pleasure from other people's pain. The second answer is, I wanna be able to sit on the beach drinking Mai Tais, I wanna win the lottery, I don't want any tension at all. Okay, that's that regulation thought process. The third answer is, I wanna achieve something. I wanna win an award. I wanna, I wanna get a degree. I wanna get a raise. That's that self-regulation. All three of those are looking outside of yourself and your brain habituates. To anything outside of you. That's the big discovery I made thirty years ago. That resulted in this model for the mind and brain is, is you walk in your house every day, twenty-one days in a row, your brain habituates the smell of your house. You cannot smell your house. You cannot smell your house, no matter how much you consciously try and consciously give effort. Because your brain is running on ninety percent, which is your unconscious. The only way to be happy long term is number four, and that is to respond to everything by being more yourself, more your intrinsic motivation. I made that up. Intrigued motivation is the key to all the energy and all the happiness, and the key to dissolving all this. Oh, wait a minute. Do that's in this book.
It, but it's not.
That's, I think, there's four measures, and I'm telling you, everybody who habituates to the other three, like the people of the Hudson Bay Company habituating to money or achievement, is going to end up, it's never, you're going to habituate, it's never going to be enough, and then it crashes. So I, I would say healthy happiness or long-term happiness, but there's only four ways. Everybody's trying to be happy. Hitler was trying to be happy. It's just what's the way you're trying to be happy? And that's the thing. What I see in this book is the fourth way. And that's what he's saying here, and I don't think people see it, because they don't look at this book in three dimensions. They look at it one dimensionally. And if I were to go out there and go, I have this great idea, and I do this, I'd get sued by the Deming Institute, because they go, wait a minute, in this book, it says, being more yourself and having this intrinsic motivation is what he's trying to do. But why are all the Deming people against Bill when he talks about it two dimensionally or me three dimensionally? Sounds like people have a major contradiction.
But but in saying this, essentially Deming Corporation today, the the nonprofit, the foundation, there's a certain aura that goes with that. Our language is changing some or a lot. But even to go back and explore Deming and put different lenses to what you're reading, I find it still fascinating and realize there's some places where maybe the wording in in English, it's, it really doesn't feed over to other cultures, I think, very well at times. But I, by coincidence, and and too, growing up, it was the investment bankers, my father played football with their children, the first one. And to understand power, money, and then their ability to reach inside our family and say, we don't want your your brother interfering with our politics, because they play both sides, both parties. I mean, there are things you do not see happen that is changing the inevitability of economies. But the oddity for me is to know this stuff. I really didn't get to work in the traditional sense of working, but I love research. I would go see the retired college president of Hendrix. His name was Marshall Steele. So when I'm thinking steel, as in material, you want to become a college president and or teach. It's been very strange, but oddly, today, I'm, uh, last week or two, I don't know if you read of on Bloomberg's reporting of Wells College up in New York collapsing. It's a small liberal arts college. And I'm sitting here thinking with y'all. Now, how could you apply out of the crisis to this group in their alumni are trying to resurrect Wells College? And when you start looking at one of their alumni that's written up works for Mayflower Capital LLC. So when you start thinking the way wealth, private schools are public in the degree of who's holding the node, who's bonding and financing the learned institutions, who's erasing data, huge volumes of data stored right now. Where and how will the future have resources to come back? Not necessarily go back to the beginning of time, but you're trying to figure out different facets of the way people have learned to understand their qualities. And how are people changing systems even before Deming was around? But there's still the challenge to apply a potential method that to me, I'm curious, could it work? Could application Deming really step in and rescue? I mean, if you really, you don't have to, I mean, it it sort of kill itself if it's so stiff that it's by the book, but I think Deming had this incredible humor of knowing how to call it out. You, you, if you ever watched it and got to participate, he was a fascinating man. And the family is too, to want to move it forward. But it's also, where is it shown? How can it be shown? And bring it to the life to show different layers of a community, an organization? Does it necessarily have to be in the C suite? Or the whole organization is learning more typical of a Japanese culture or whomever, but it's still a fascinating read. I'll go back and look at the the three editions of this book, and even wondered at one point, I thought he was pulling out material where he may have a reference to a religion or some aspect of somebody relating to, I think, some religious values which could have biased the the testing or something, as I recall. And Tim, it may have been in one of our earlier phone sessions that, not recently, but something that I had set aside, I thought I could pull it up. I thought it could have been in the first edition book compared to the second. But you go back and you start looking, if you're an active edition and you like to look, see where has the thinking changed or been augmented?
So have you guys, are, oh, are you guys familiar with Laloux Circles, L A L O U X? Then it's, I think, why, what we're talking about here is culture, again, and I can send a link to this. Uh, to Timmy can send it out, but the thing is, is that there's five of these circles. You can measure a culture of an organization. And then what you want to do is you want to move, you can only move up one or down. The the first four are the four thought processes, but it's, it's really kind of impossible to be in this fourth thought process. You have to get there by flow, which is the fifth thought process. And that's why the fourth in the Laloux Circle always fails. So it's really interesting, you know, and when you look at the United States in that, it's like, you know, the the second is this hierarchical, you know, like seniority-based, and the third is this, um, you look about merit. And if you look at the United States, what I see happening is we kind of tapped out at the merit level, because we had to struggle over what's merit. Is it what you truly contribute, or is it, you know, D E I and all this other stuff? Like, well, how are we doing merit? And what's happened now is we now got a president who's and when I say this to people, when they look at the loose circles and they realize this, they go, oh, wait a minute. It's like, we got a president that's taking us back to the first circle. Because the first circle is the wolf pack. And basically, it's this concept, when when a culture first starts off, it's, hey, whichever one of us is can beat up the other five of us is going to be in charge, right? Right? Why? Because then that person will defend us against everybody else. And it's like, we're actually receding from the, from this struggle at the third level back down to the first. But if you look at the Laloux Circles, I think that's a lot of like what I do when I go to an organization is like, let's measure where you're at, and there's objective measures of what the culture is. And again, it's according to thought process, and then there's steps to raise your culture. And ideally, I think Deming actually has everything you need in the system of profound knowledge, if it's done three dimensionally, to take you to that fifth circle.
Very interesting.
It's interesting that Deming doesn't believe his is the only theory that might be possible. He calls it a system of profound knowledge, not the system. So he's allowing for there to be other systems, which is very reasonable. There are other ways to achieve all kinds of great things. This is his system, one of the possible systems of profound knowledge, which can bring about transformation and change. It's not the only one. And certainly, his would be somewhat, if not significantly different now, had he lived and continued to think and write. I mean, we're, we're thirty years, we're thirty years past, but Deming, we we got to include some other things.
But I I think, I I look at Out of the Crisis as being as the first book of a trilogy. I see The New Economics as a second book, and I've actually fed this through Chat G P T. Bill and I have done this, because it's like, if you ask Chat G P T to write the summary of Out of the Crisis after, like I wrote a summary, and say, write this as the first step in a trilogy. Out of the Crisis really works as a first step in the trilogy, which is, the first, the first book is always, what's the issue? And then you solve the issue. And literally, it's a crisis. It's funny, it's called Out of the Crisis. The second step in a trilogy is always, no, 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 no. That issue you thought was it, and you solved it, and you blew up the Death Star? There's a big issue behind that, that's going to result in a bunch of other death stars. And that's what New Economics is essentially saying is, whoa, wait a minute, there's this big thing, and then the third brings it together. And I actually wrote it, then with Chat G P T showed Bill, like, this is the third book. And so Bill and I have talked about this, because I think Bill is a modern, to me, he's the best Deming guy there is. That's just my, my opinion, like. And the thing is, I think he should write it, and he and I've talked about it. I've I've shown him how to make this third dimensional and how, because the thing is, is everything in those fourteen points in The New Economics, he says, are an effect of system of profound knowledge. So anybody who's stuck on the fourteen points is already a step behind where Deming was at. And then if Deming had lived longer, I believe he would have figured out these things about the system of profound knowledge to where he would have gotten, wait a minute. You know, other people can do this a different way, they'll find, but everything's going to run through this, because it's got the four key areas. And and not the four circles, but it's the four overlaps, I call it. Like, so there's, you can't control, you can't, you can't, you know, you can't change the circles, but where the circles all overlap, designate things handles that you can actually intentionally change.
So in what you're saying, and if you said it's not the system, but a system, and there's another system or systems out there, then can you, do you have a feeling for that space? The space outside of a system with the potentiality of another system, but what's happening before the recognition for another system and not the system you're in? See, there's a fertility there that I'm, I'm curious.
I think you said earlier about different cultures. I think, I think someone could that system he has and translate it into a different culture, but the principles behind it are still going to be the same. Like, for example, where where variation, I said this already, and psychology overlap. And he said it himself, is uniqueness.
Mm hmm.
Uniqueness of the individual. Uh, you can measure the uniqueness of the individual. You can help people become more their unique self. So that is something you can put your hand on. Now, put your hand on psychology and turn that up or down, but show me how you do that. You can't turn up or down the four circles he has, but where they overlap are four things you can turn up and down. And that's what he was, he didn't know it, but that's what he was turning up or down whenever he was successful. And that's where anybody, that's like, if you read my LinkedIn profile, if you, if you ask Chat G P T for basically the best books on transformation, it'll give you eleven books. And seven of those books are based on one of those areas that overlap with Deming's two circles. Three of those books is based on a different one that overlaps. One of those books is based on a different one, and none of them cover the fourth one. So none of the books on transformation that we all read and think are great cover all the four areas. They focus on one. And and none of them cover one of those, those four areas. So that's what, like Bill and I have been doing, is, is if you look at this, there are literal things you could turn up or turn down. And when I look at an organization, I sit there and go, you can tell what's going on with this organization, which way they're going. If you're turning up or turning down these things, and one of it is valuing the uniqueness of the individual. Like, like, do you understand the uniqueness of the individual? Because if you tell me a story about, if I tell you I have a problem with this person, and you tell me how to handle it, and you don't take into account their uniqueness, you are not adjusting the uniqueness of the individual. You're just not.
Very interesting. Hey, clarify for me how you read something in the third dimension. You've been talking about one dimensional, two dimensional, three dimensional. I don't follow what you're talking about.
So the way, the way I would say this, and and this is going to be part of my talk, is efficiency, you know, Bill's thing is efficiency effectiveness. It's efficiency is is doing things the right way, and that would be analogous to acceptable. So we made a part, is it acceptable? If it's between here and here, okay, that's one dimensional thinking. What Bill's been trying to talk about, and he's been getting all this blowback on, is the two-dimensional version, which is desirability or effectiveness. Are you doing the right thing? So within this spec, there is an ideal point. Now, are you getting to the ideal point? That's, that's like the right thing. And so Bill's talking about desirability versus acceptability, and and that's what he did his whole second series on with the Deming Institute. And it's, it's brutal to watch Deming people who go, you know, you people don't, you're not creative enough, you're not trying to do all this stuff, you're not open to this stuff, but Bill, shut up. Like, Bill literally gets comments, people, shut up, Bill. Like, it's, let's do the acceptable thing and stop the desirable thing. The third level, I'm calling equity, and it really is where everybody wins. And the idea is, is that what I need to do isn't what's best for me, and it's not even best for you, it's best for the whole system. So this is where Akoff talks about, you know, architecture, or talks about like a grocery store. You put the bread out front, and you sell it at a loss, because it wins over here. Well, the bread is losing. And Bill likes to talk about this one airplane where the wings, they had two different specs, and they sat there for three and a half years and couldn't put the plane together. And it's like, the answer isn't, I'm going to make a spec that's good for you, you're going to make a spec for me. It's like, what was the right spec for the entire company? And that's that third level. Like, are you doing what is best for the system, even in the moment, it's not benefiting you?
So a question might be, when do you begin to sense you're more like the sun and the moon?
What does that mean?
Well, the light from the sun or the moon in your orientation to life. There are people that line up and listen very closely to what was handed down at Sinai. Then there are others who get excited over Pentecost. And there are people who may not even have a faith tradition, but regardless, there are values that people around the world are holding that are shaping the boundaries of their star or moon, and they listen.
So there is, there is what is said or written. That's one dimensional. There's why it's said, it was written or said, and that's the context.
Yes.
But then there's the, I say the why behind the why. It's the, like, if you're talking about the Bible, it's the doctrine that runs throughout the Bible, the doctrine in the Bible or the doctrine, the truth level. Because it's funny, Deming, Bill and I talk about this all the time. Deming never defined truth, and 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 Akoff never defined truth. But there is a definition for truth, and the thing is, is that, is the doctrine that the sun is that thing that runs throughout and is non-contradictory throughout the entire work, and then how it comes up in context and application could look totally different. But when you trace it all back to the, to the root, to the doctrine, it's, it's always the same.
Wait, so let me, I I want to push back on that. From, there's a difference from purpose and doctrine. And that's one of the things that people talk about religion is the doctrine versus the underlying purpose, which creates the doctrine, and doctrines don't go in the way people want them to go. Isn't it more about purpose and doctrine? And it's not, I'm not playing with words here. There is a very distinct difference between purpose in an organization and the doctrine.
The thing is, is that what I say is this, because when I help companies, help people feel engaged, the thing is, is your The thing is, is your purpose always lies outside of you. Your uniqueness always lies within you. And engagement always happens when a person knows how their uniqueness or ability contributes to the overall mission. So if you think about it, I'm a person in a company which has this overall mission, my purpose is where those two cross and my purpose is always outside of me.
But that's engagements different from purpose. I might be engaged, but that might not be totally aligned with my purpose or the purpose of the company and so forth. Again, purpose to me is very important. Sengay and many others talk about purpose versus engagement or doctrine. I think purpose is, is the third level, not doctrine, not even close.
Yeah. And I, I have a whole thing, like Bill gave me a video on Sengay and he has so many contradictions that he literally
He changes, he changes.
Says one thing and then says something at the end and it's like, this is how you end up with bad mental health is if you really start applying this. It's bad mental health. The bottom level
Let's not go there, but let's just talk about purpose. Let's just talk
But the bottom level of doctrine is definitions. Mental health begins in definitions. Your unconscious knows the non-contradictory definition of every word. So definitions are actually the first level, the lowest level. And then up from that is like the intent or the purpose is always up this way. Because, because whatever we talk about, it's like, what do you mean by what you're saying? That's the foundation.
But you got to get to purpose to make sure everyone's on purpose versus the doctrine. And I think that's what's happening. Too many people are focusing on the doctrine and not the purpose.
Oh, I don't think anybody's focused on the doctrine.
Well, okay.
And I'll, I'll tell you, Deming does, and I'll tell you, he does. But when I ask people their definition for something and they don't give me their definition, they're not focused on the doctrine. But the first thing Deming does and the first thing Akoff does is they give a definition for a word. And so that's the issue is
Except for truth.
Can't agree on the definition, then we can't, we can't go anywhere.
Except for
They never use the word truth. That's the key. As long as they don't use the word truth, they don't have to define it.
But he doesn't, he doesn't define truth. But anyway, but I just, I, we have a difference between what, how purpose should play in this. So I, I understand.
Well, I think purpose is extremely important.
It doesn't, it didn't hear from, it didn't hear from it, from what you were saying. You had these three things getting to the third and I didn't hear purpose at all.
Yeah. Well, I was just saying, from, I was just using Bill's example, but yeah, from purpose, I mean, it's the thing we're all striving for.
But how do you bring that into a company? And then how do you bring that into the da, 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 da?
Well, what you do is you, is you have to define the purpose of the company. But then that's made up of words and then you got to make sure everybody understands what, the way, when I ran the company, when I was in charge of the company, it's literally, you know, the owner of the company went away for a year to fly jets. And we had a, we had a company vision statement. And this is how I ran the company is everybody, when they walked up to me with an issue, I'd say, they tell me what they want to do or what the issues and what they want to do. And I would say, what's the vision of the company? And if they couldn't recite it to me, I would recite it to them. You know, we are a chemical and solutions company that da, 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 da. And what I was saying unconsciously is you better start memorizing this if you want to make decisions around to be here and be a leader. Now, where in that vision is what you want to do covered?
And where in, in
Because that's, that's the, the purpose, the vision is the purpose of the company.
No, it's not. There's a difference between purpose and a vision and for purpose, vision and mission, they're all different. I, so that's again, we, we disagree on that.
Okay, but how you get to the purpose is the vision.
I agree with that.
So, so the thing is, is whatever these people want to do, it's like, I'm going to tell you that it's not going to line up with our purpose. If you can't make it, show me where it is in the vision statement. And then that's where people had to think and they actually enjoyed their job. They felt some autonomy. And then they could come to me and go, we need to give the distributors these extra pump toppers because in our vision, it's right here and it's leading to this purpose of, you know, making all this money and stuff. And it was like, bingo. And now all of a sudden, everybody's engaged. Every, everybody's on the same page because it's all, it's all going through this vision. That's, I'm like, this is the easiest. Maybe I'm an engineer, but when I finally got to run a company, twenty-five million dollar company, we like tripled our profitability in a year. And it was like, this is easy.
That's profitability. How did you do with happiness of the people? How did you measure it? How did you measure it?
No, you know, no one's screaming for a raise. No one is, is, uh, everybody's enjoying work. Everybody's here's the big way to measure it. When the, when the boss came back, when the owner came back, everybody started coming to me and bitching. So when the boss was there, they'd all come bitch to me because they were all afraid of that guy. And I was the only person who knew how to argue with them. And so there was all this bitching. And then once he went away, everybody's like, can we just keep it like this? What do we need to do to keep this guy away? Everybody's like, this is the, this is the best company I've ever been in. This is, this is, everybody's ecstatic. Everybody's happy. And then he came back after a year and people are not happy anymore.
But you didn't, weren't able to measure that, that, and I'm not saying we
Well, how would you measure, how would you measure that? Because I'm saying lack of complaints. I'm saying people bitching to me like three times a day or I mean, all different people in this company, that's all I, I heard of when I was the number two guy. And I didn't get, all that stuff went away.
Yeah, I, I agree. I just say, do we even need to measure it? I, I don't know.
Well, I would say people were being more, they were responding to everything by being more themselves. They understood who they were.
And your oppression.
Other people were, and then they were able to be more themselves.
Okay.
Well, I've got a lot of Number one measure would be is that the Christmas party, I had at least half the spouses come up to me and say, hey,
My husband's
This is great. This is great. This last year has been great in our house. Because my spouse is no longer complaining about the company. That would be my objective measure.
We've got a group here with a huge amount of experience and understanding. Anybody know where the funnel experiment came from?
No.
What's the source?
I think it's Shoehart.
You think?
I think that's what he said in there. Yeah.
I'll have to look for it. All right. What else are, are we?
I'm, uh, I'm over here to be downstairs with my spouse, so I'm going to say good night. Great conversation tonight. I really enjoyed it.
Same here, guys. Great question. Great questions, Dennis.
Yeah, same. I have to drop. Thanks.
Well, it's certainly a start. I have to go do some funnel experiments. Thank you all much. I look forward to the link.